Okay, I think we're on, Paul.
Okay, we are gonna convene the April eighteenth, two thousand thirteen, meeting of the Sherburne Board of Selectmen. Our agenda tonight is, as always, we read the agenda first. There will be, at six oh five, a discussion of remote participation. At six ten, public comment. Six twenty, recognition of Bob Ambos. And the appointment of a new Veterans Agent, Barrel Officer, Veterans Grave Officer, and Director of Veteran Services. A Council on Aging Happy Birthday Proclamation. At six thirty, we will review and consider approval of the election warrant for the two thousand and thirteen municipal elections. At six forty, consideration of Payroll and Treasury Warrant forty-three. At six forty-five, a presentation from Norfolk Ram on stormwater. And a pamphlet that they've prepared. At seven twenty, continued review of warrant articles, Article twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, and thirty-five. And under, at seven thirty, other business, a request to delegate authority to set mileage reimbursement rate to the town administrator. Future agenda items and topics not reasonably anticipated by the Chair forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. That's the proposed agenda, any changes?
I have no changes, Paul.
I have a question for you. Under review of warrant articles, there were two articles that we held because of your proximity to, uh...
Yeah.
Subject matter.
Right.
Both involved the fact that you live on Whitney Street. And so that they're not on the list here. And you had said that you thought you could participate. Uh, I'm not sure if I can participate, I don't know that I have any real interest either way. Um, but rather, and what we were doing was just deciding whether to support Advisory's position or not.
Yes.
I think is what we were doing. So, um, rather than try and mess up the apple cart, it seems to me it's holding or no action, or take action. I, I prefer to just avoid taking action, I think, on those, just so that there's no question of conflict.
Okay. 'Cause they're not on here.
Yeah, I see they're not on there. I think there are a couple, couple of other held items that we're waiting information to be presented at town meeting, as opposed to anything that we could take action on.
That was what Paul's talking about.
Which is a question for Advisory which hasn't been answered, and which they'd have to deal with at town meeting.
Right, right now, I'm only focusing on...
No, those two.
On the agenda.
On the agenda.
And do we wanna add any other articles to the agenda?
Well, how about if we add just discussion of held articles? So we can see what our disposition might be, how about that? 'Cause there were four that you just mentioned, right, Diane?
Okay.
Okay, so I would move to, uh, accept the agenda as amended, to include discussion of held articles.
Second. All in favor? And that motion included approval of the agenda with that amendment, right?
That's correct, yes. Before we get to the first item, I do wanna call for a moment of silence to remember what happened in Boston at the marathon. To remember those who were injured, or who gave their lives. And to remember our resolve that acts of terror will not shut down Massachusetts, or Boston, or our society, that we will carry on. Okay. Great. Discussion of remote participation. Our chairman is not here tonight, Tom Twining remains in intensive care. Our town administrator also is not here, but he's traveling. He'll be back next week for our next meeting. We've been considering rem- remote participation because one of our members has been ill. The word is that he will not be able to participate tonight even remotely. The question for us is, do we wanna go forward and put remote participation in place so that it's available long-term? Or is this something that, because it's not gonna be used tonight, we should put off? I don't know what your thoughts are, Paul, but I think the, we haven't, as I understand, we've had no further feedback since last week. And the feedback we had gotten last week was, for the most part, quite positive for going remote participation. I know that David's made some suggestion of how to do it on a trial basis, if you will, and that, that, what he suggested makes good sense, but since we don't have to do it tonight, I think perhaps we'd wanna wait till he's here at our next meeting to consider implementing that trial basis and allowing him to explain some of the things he said, but I, I'll follow your lead on this. If Tom were available to just listen in, I'd be pushing forward tonight, quite frankly.
Well, I, I think at the very least, we should let people know what the town administrator has recommended, so that, uh, they'll have a chance to react to it and comment on it.
Great.
So, if, if I could ask your indulgence, I will read the proposal from the town administrator on the subject of remote participation. His... He writes, "Please review my proposed motion below for your Thursday night meeting." "I believe the parameters below are enough to get us started on a controlled basis." So he has drafted a proposed motion, and it has six paragraphs. The motion reads as follows. "I move that the Town of Sherburne Board of Selectmen adopt remote participation as allowed by the open meeting law with the following policies in place. One, the use of remote participation will be restricted to the Board of Selectmen on an experimental, controlled trial basis, which will allow boards and committees time to discuss the issue. Paragraph two, "The town administrator is charged with distributing, quote, 'a Board of Selectmen Remote Participation Advisory,' close quote, and distributing to all public bodies. Paragraph three, "All public bodies are requested to review the advisory and pose questions to the administrator for any needed clarifications. Answers will be given in accordance with the open meeting law, local bylaw, and/or Board of Selectmen policy. Item four, "The Board of Selectmen will allow public bodies to consider the advisory and vote to request permission to opt out of remote participation, provided the public body states the reason it desires to do so and understands that the Board of Selectmen may deny the request or revoke the opt-out status at any time for any reason. Paragraph five, "Remote participation will be restricted to meetings held in the main conference room using town telephone, not video, equipment, if the room or equipment is available. If the room or equipment is unavailable, remote participation will not be allowed by any chair of a public body that hasn't already voted to opt out." Item five, "Remote participation will be restricted to meetings held in the main conference room using town telephone," and then he's got parentheses, "not video," "equipment. If the room or equipment is unavailable, remote participation will not be allowed by any chair of a public body that hasn't already voted to opt out." Not be allowed. That hasn't already voted to opt out. There's a lot of negatives in there.
Yeah, I'll have to sort out what that is.
Item six, "The Board of Selectmen reserves the right to continue remote participation on a trial basis until the board decides that there is enough information and experimentation to change or remove restrictions or revoke remote participation altogether." What I just read is the proposal from the town administrator. As Peter has indicated, he's not here, there's reason to wait to, before we take a vote on this thing. As I read it, I think there needs to be some edits to it, and I think we...
Agreed, yeah, I think there's some confusion.
There's some also...
Yes, that's right, so...
So maybe one of the things we can do today is trying to clean up the language here a little bit.
Sure.
So, like, on a preliminary basis, could I suggest the following? First, um, where it says the following policies in place, the, the, uh, open meeting law uses the word conditions, that the boards can establish conditions. So I'd like to take out the word policies and put in the word conditions.
Does that make sense?
And then looking at condition number one, do we wanna restrict remote participation to the Board of Selectmen on a trial basis?
I don't know, uh, where I get hung up is, when you get down to four, we're having, we're allowing other groups to opt out when we're not allowing them to be opted in. I just have a disconnect there still, and, uh, so I think that needs clarity, so... And, uh, I think because it's a trial basis, I don't see why we need to restrict it only to the Board of Selectmen, particularly where we're, the one restriction is that it's in this room, even though it's called Main Conference Room. I don't know if that's what we te- technically call this room.
So you wanna delete condition one?
I, I think so, or, uh, I, I think it needs to be on an experimental, controlled trial basis, but I don't know that it need be restricted to the Board of Selectmen.
So you wanna delete the words restricted to the Board of Selectmen?
Yes.
Could I suggest the experimental trial basis, we put a time period in there, such as ninety days?
Sure.
So we're gonna authorize remote participation on an experimental, controlled trial basis for a ninety-day period?
Yep.
Which will allow boards and committees time to discuss and become familiar with?
Okay. With the issue, yeah.
Then, second proposal from the town administrators, that the town administrator is charged with distributing a Board of Selectmen Remote Participation Advisory and distributing it to all public bodies, I'm, I'm okay with that.
That's fine, uh, we would discuss with him what he means by that, you know, what we're really, it's not well def- it's not defined here. But presumably that's his instructions to others, how this is going to work.
Yeah, there's a whole series of technical requirements.
Okay.
Like, it has to be a roadblock.
Yes, that, that's right.
The Chair has to make a determination, there's only five reasons that you can use it.
Reasons, yep.
So I hope that this is part of educating everybody, so we don't run into
Yep.
Open Meeting Law violations. The third one
I don't have a problem with that, yeah.
Is to allow questions to be asked and to be answered by the town administrator during the trial period, again, it's part of educating. It's what we should be doing, is educating everybody for this.
Right.
So paragraph four, that's the one that you...
Well, I was, uh, I had trouble with that, where I referred to opting out when nobody was already allowed in. Now we're allowing them in, so now four makes more sense. And we're not obligating any other committees to use remote participation.
What we're asking, what he's asking us to vote, what the town administrator is asking the Board of Selectmen to vote, is to allow public bodies to consider the advisory and to vote to either pro- request, I don't wanna say permission, I wanna say authorization, from the Board of Selectmen to opt out.
Right. Which still doesn't obligate anybody to use
And what?
Remote participation.
So it shouldn't be opt-in, it shouldn't be opt-out?
No, opt-out is the right wording now.
Can I delete, "Providing the public body states the reason it desires to do so and understands the Board of Selectmen may deny the request or revoke the opt-out status at any time for any reason"?
I think that's, yeah, we don't wanna be telling people that you have to
Right.
Participate remotely, that's right, that's, that's...
The, the only time I could see something like that coming up is that, under the Americans with Disabilities Act, we have to make reasonable accommodations for somebody with a disability.
Yep.
And if somebody files a complaint against the town because some board or commission hasn't allowed sufficient accommodation under this, this, uh...
Yeah.
Process. But, but rather than are revoking somebody's, I mean, the way to do that is simply to talk to them, and they're reasonable people.
Right, right. And, and, and it wouldn't be for us to deny a committee that decides it doesn't wanna have remote participation, that's their call, so...
So can we put a period after a remote participation?
Yes.
Then, the next one is, "Are we gonna restrict it to meetings held in the main conference room using town telephone equipment?" I think Barbara, our, our town council, had recommended this first because there was video equipment available for remote participation, and that would allow someone to be in bed and to watch and get the extra benefit from having the video part of it. But we did wanna restrict it to the particular equipment that we bought, because it's equipment that has multiple
Right.
Microphones and can pick up.
Right.
Rather than somebody trying to use their cellphone and trying to pick up the audience and, and all of that.
But do we know if that equipment can't, that this equipment can't be used in another room? Do we have...
Well, it can, because it can be plugged into any telephone jack.
Any telephone jack, and we have telephone jacks in other rooms, so... I, I don't know that we have to keep it into this particular room, as long as they're using that equipment to have the quality of remote participation that we think is necessary. You follow me?
All right, so you, you wanna delete
Just restricted to meetings using town telephone equipment, so hel- yeah, delete held in the main conference room, comma.
Okay. Can we delete?
Not video?
Not video?
Yes.
Just because it's hard to understand that.
Right.
My point about the not video is that sometimes, um, if someone is sick, the problem with the video connection is that they may not want people to see the tubes sticking out of them and
Right.
Their hospital jammies and all of that. They're entitled to their privacy.
Right.
But I don't think we have to specify in the regulations here that it's not video. If somebody wants to participate by video, they should be allowed to participate
Right, right.
By video, it's not, just don't think that there should be required to be, to be, uh, video.
Excuse me, the other end of that is, I don't know, D- Dover Sherburne Cable TV is wonderful, but how far does it transmit? You know, Sherburne gets it, Dover gets it, you're not gonna find it in a Boston hospital, you're not gonna find it in some...
You're not gonna find it in Arizona.
You're not gonna find it in somebody in Arizona or California, so for them to be able to watch the meeting is also very difficult.
Be the next sentence, do you wanna just strike, yeah? Room or... Yeah.
So you're only taking out room or?
Yes, but let's get rid of this double negative. I, I understand what he's saying here. He's saying if the, if the committee's already opted out, there is no remote participation, but why do we need to say that?
That's right.
So, why don't we just say...
Remote participation will not be allowed.
Period.
Yeah.
And then, item six, "Reserves the right to continue remote participation on trial basis."
We put a ninety-day trigger there.
Yeah. Why don't we just say, "The Board of Selectmen will review these conditions after the ninety-day trial period." How about that?
Yep.
Anything?
Well, I was just looking back at my notes, Paul, when you'd mentioned Barbara's, uh, town council's recommendations, where one was only in this room, we've covered that, one was televised, and now we cover that. The other thing she had mentioned in my notes here was that any other board must vote to participate and record their vote with the Board of Selectmen. I don't, that, I have no urge, you know, big desire to do that necessarily, but that's just the third recommendation she had. And, oh, we're allowing opting out, so people are in unless they opt out.
Yeah, this says you're automatically in. Every board or committee in town will be automatically opting in unless they vote to opt out.
Right.
And if they opt out, then we get a list of those.
Then we get the, so we're, we're covered. I think this is broader and more inclusive of everybody.
There's just a category of people who do nothing.
That's right.
They don't opt in, they don't opt out. The default under this is that they're
They're in, unless they opt out.
Right.
That's right.
Whereas Barbara was recommending the opposite.
That they opt in.
They're out unless they
Opt in.
They opt in.
Yeah. Well, so how would we go from here? We would maybe provide David this and, and then finalize it for next week.
And you, you might, like, post it on the website or something, so that people can see it, if they have any comments.
Well, I think what Paul's suggesting is to get, see if any folks have feedback on this, committee members and so forth. So David may wanna say, "Here's the tentative motion that's gonna come up at next week's meeting," and he can send it around to the same distribution list that you'd used for comments.
Yeah, but also put it on the, the webpage.
Sure, why not?
Yeah, just so there's transparency, everybody knows what we're doing, why we're doing it. If they wanna
Sounds good.
Add something else to this, then they can get ahold of us.
Do you wanna post it on the front page of the website? It's just getting very crowded now.
I don't care. Maybe you should post up a lot.
On Town and Fire Chief.
Grace Shepard?
I'm just wondering how much of this equipment you have. And I have seen the telephone equipment once. If you've got one, I think you're gonna have to constantly create some sort of a system for making sure that people have it available.
Well, that's gonna be, because he wrote it?
He's gonna be the one.
It's gonna be the town administrator's responsibility.
Okay.
And if the end of the ninety days are fine, then we need. It's not working. One of the adjustments we could make is to go buy a second one, or a third one. All right, have, have we, um, finished on remote participation, any other input from our guests?
Sounds good to me.
All right.
Great.
Our next subject.
Is public comment?
Oh, yes, oh, I forgot. I was gonna go right to
Yeah, proclamation.
Okay, next, is there any public comment? Suzie had her hand up first.
No, Elliot was quicker than me.
Okay, Elliot Taylor?
Elliot. Elliot Taylor, thirty North Main Street. At a zoning Board of Appeals meeting, hearing, Ed Rose, the Sherburne Business Association, was turned down for a request to have outdoor entertainment at the Sherburne Inn this year. Ed Rose then went to the planning board, who voted to let him resubmit his plan to the zoning Board of Appeals over Elliot Taylor's objections. At a second zoning Board of Appeals meeting, they voted to allow the party over Elliot Taylor's objections. Over twenty-five years ago, the Town of Sherburne Town Meeting voted a bylaw stating there will be no outdoor entertainment at any restaurant in Sherburne. I asked the selectmen to look into this matter. And I question one, what right has the zoning board or planning board have to go against the vote of a town meeting, especially when there's opposition from an abutter or anyone else? And two, what right does the zoning Board of Appeals have to grant any variance to anyone other than the legal property owner? I have not yet talked to an attorney regarding this matter, but if I do, the Town of Sherburne, Ed Rose, and the Sherburne Inn may be in for a sizable lawsuit. I do not wish to go this attorney route, so I'm asking the selectmen to look into this matter and see if this illegal party can be called off. Thank you.
Well, you know that we're not the appeals board for either the planning board or the Board of Appeals.
I realize that, but...
You have a rev- an avenue to, to address these issues. We don't have any subject matter jurisdiction over this issue at all.
Well, you do have, uh, the, uh, uh, legal counsel for the Town of Sherburne comes under your jurisdiction. And if I get a sizable lawsuit against the Town of Sherburne, I think it's every board's concern. So, uh, I just want to, uh, say that I feel this is illegal, that the, the town meeting voted twenty-five years ago, or more, no outdoor entertainment at a Sherburne restaurant. And here we go. Last year, I, over my pleas, the zoning board allowed them to have their party. I complained to the police about six times about the noise coming from that party. We also have a bylaw that says there'll be no objectionable noise, vibration, and about six other annoyances. And, uh, I complained. And, uh, I complained, they stopped the noise when they got damn good and ready. And the zoning board said they could stay until ten thirty, and it was after ten thirty I called again, said the noise still continues, and then the noise stopped. Now, I'm just saying, I think it is the selectmen's concern that this is going on in our town. And I think it's illegal, and I want it stopped, because as I say, if I get an attorney, you may be in for a big lawsuit. Ed Rose, the town of Sherburne, and the Sherburne Inn. I don't wanna go that route, but I do have a right to be in my home and not be bothered by an illegal party, uh, within two hundred feet of my house.
I think we should refer this to the town administrator and let him.
Yes, I think that's wise. I mean, and, and we have a zoning enforcement officer who deals with complaints and violations of zoning bylaws and so forth, which is what Elliot, I think, is, believes is what's happening here. And of course, the zoning board, I was at that meeting when they voted unanimously in support of the Sherburne Business Association event. My understanding is the event accommodated, changing the times that music would take place, putting up sound barriers and so forth. But I think the crux of the issue, and I'm no attorney, so I think referring to town council is key, is, is.
It's illegal for them to be there anyway, because the town meeting voted there'll be no outdoor entertainment at any Sherburne restaurant.
Yeah, I, I think the crux is which entity is, uh, putting on the music and so forth.
So, we're gonna give it to the town administrator and the town council, let them sort it out with the board of appeals and the planning board for the time being. Susie?
I suppose that, um, you're with the conservation commission, and I know last year I talked to, I let people know that the garlic mustard is highly invasive. And now's the time. It's, uh, I pulled up a, a baggie tour of it today, and it's back out there, and so like I did last year, I'll provide some horse grain bags, which are real heavy bag. And I'll leave some down at the recycling center if people wanna pick them up and start pulling them again. It's the only way to get rid of it. You can't compost it, don't try to burn it. It's gotta be bagged and thrown away. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, then we're gonna draw that piece of our agenda to a close. And then we go on to our six twenty agenda item. Sorry for the being behind schedule. But we have a proposed proclamation. So I would move that the board of selectmen adopt the following proclamation, which I'm going to read.
Excellent.
Will you second the motion?
I second that motion.
Reads as follows. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Town of Sherburne, a proclamation. Whereas Robert G. Ambos has fulfilled the duties of veteran service officer for the town of Sherburne since two thousand and four. Whereas his duties have included director of veteran services, veterans' graves officer, and veterans' burial officer. And whereas, in this capacity, he has helped numerous Sherburne veterans and their families with issues of available assistance, with understanding their rights and benefits, and aiding those transitioning from active duty to civilian life. And whereas Mr. Ambos has served the town and his fellow veterans in this capacity with competence, efficiency, and compassion. Now therefore, we, the selectmen of the town of Sherburne, on behalf of all its citizens, express our high esteem and our appreciation and commendation for his meritorious service. And witness thereof, we have caused the seal of the town to be affixed to this proclamation on this eighteenth day of April in the year two thousand and thirteen.
All in favor? It's best part of the job doing these sorts of things.
Yes. So Ambos, if you come forward.
Thank you, Paul.
It's our honor and our privilege.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Paul.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you for everything you've done for this community.
Thank you.
Well done.
What a service.
That's grand.
Well, with the the conclusion of, of Bob Ambos's service, we have to have a veterans' officer. And we have one that's willing to come forward and to serve the town and the veterans of the town. That is, Doug Brody has agreed to serve. Is that correct? You've agreed to serve? And therefore, it's my honor and privilege to move to appoint Doug Brody as veterans' agent, burial officer, veterans' grave officer, and director of veterans' services.
I second that motion.
Hearing, no discussion, all in favor?
Congrats.
Thank you. You are hereby appointed. Congratulations.
You're the right man for the job. Thank you.
Way to go.
That's great.
It's a big shoes to fill.
We're in good hands, folks.
Absolutely.
And while we're at it, the council on aging has asked us to give recognition to a happy birthday. And so, I would move that the board of selectmen adopt the following proclamation.
I second your motion.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Town of Sherburne, a proclamation. Whereas Arpad Tarkoy has reached the age of one hundred years. Whereas this symbolizes a special achievement in his life, for his family, and for the town of Sherburne. Whereas Arpad Turk Tarkoy has demonstrated his ability to contribute to the citizenry of Sherburne and to make a difference in our community. Now therefore, we, the selectmen of the town of Sherburne, on behalf of all its citizens, extend their warmest congratulations and best wishes on the occasion of his one hundredth birthday on April ten, two thousand and thirteen. And witness thereof, we have caused the seal of this town to be affixed to this proclamation on this eighteenth day of April in the year two thousand and thirteen. All in favor?
Do we sing happy birthday? We probably, better not. But that's, that's tremendous. That's great. Good for him.
One hundred years.
Stories he can tell.
I bet he's seen a lot. That brings us to the election warrant. We have in front of us a call for a annual town election for the town of Sherburne for Tuesday, May fourteenth, two thousand and thirteen. The polls to open at seven AM to eight PM for the following purposes. For the voters to cast their votes in the town election for the candidates, for the offices of moderator, selectman, tax collector, treasurer, assessor, another assessor, Sherburne School Committee, trustee Solon Academy, trustee Public Library, water commissioner, cemetery commissioner, planning board, Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee, Board of Health, Recreation Commission, and constable. And to answer three ballot questions, which are a debt exclusion. Question one, shall the town of Sherburne be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition Two and One Half, so-called, the amount required to pay for the bond issued in order to purchase a command vehicle for the fire department, purchase and install a new computer server for the fire department, purchase and install a new HVAC system, and to make energy efficiency improvements at Fire Station One, to purchase and install a solar-powered pedestrian-activated cross-signal on North Main Street, purchase a dump truck for CM and D, purchase a pickup truck for CM and D, install an asphalt overlay, and purchase and install fencing and containers at the transfer station, purchase public safety communications equipment, construct an energy access road at the Pine Hill School, pay for the various items of capital equipment and improvements at the Pine Hill School, pay for the planning and engineering of improvements through the intersection of Woodland Street and Mill Street, and Woodland Street and Golding Street West. Question two, shall the town of Sherburne be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition Two and One Half, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the town's allocable share of the bond issued by the Dover Sherburne Regional School District in order to add air conditioning to the middle school, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto? Question three, shall the town of Sherburne be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition Two and One Half, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the town's allocable share of the bond issued by the Dover Sherburne Regional School District in order to pay for the various items of capital equipment and improvements, including payment of any costs incidental and related thereto? Do you move approval?
I move that we approve this warrant for annual town election, as you just read it, Paul.
Second.
And for discussion, just those three questions, people will be getting their advisory report in the mail very soon. I understand it's in, at the printer, so it's mailed Tuesday, where they'll be able to read about each of these capital items that are in these three questions. And each of these capital items will live and die, basically, on an individual basis at town meeting on a two-thirds vote, and then the folks get to vote for them here, so. Just wanted to point that out.
All in favor? All right.
Signed a lot of things tonight, Paul.
Well, so the town's gonna have an election.
All right.
Suppose you voted no.
Democracy in operation.
Suppose you voted no on that.
Then we have the warrant number forty-three, forty-two?
Forty-three. What does it say?
So there's warrant forty-two here, warrant forty-three here, and on the document it says.
Well, I'm gonna call it forty-two.
Forty-two.
Yep.
So the agenda was wrong, so, um.
Warrant forty-two.
It's a typo.
It's a typo on the agenda. We apologize. By unanimous consent, we deem the agenda amended to include warrant number forty-two, not warrant forty-three.
Sounds good to me.
All right. So, do you wanna give us a report on the?
Well, sure. I reviewed the package, and there's a lot of pieces of paper in here. I had a few questions, which, most of which have been answered. And I've left some follow-up work for the town administrator, just to get some clarity of how some of these things work. But otherwise, I would move that we approve this warrant tonight and have it not held, held until Monday for the DA's review and approval on this line item. So I would move that we approve this subject to his review and approval when he gets back.
Second.
And so, that's where we're at. Great.
Okay, all in favor?
Sign it here, Paul.
Now we're at tonight's featured event. We need the drum roll for Norfolk Ram. Please come forward to the presentation seat.
Okay. Okay, good evening. John McCallis with Norfolk Ram, with Wayne Perry, Norfolk Ram. We are here to update everyone about the work done down at Farm Pond as part of a Section three nineteen grant the town received through the US EPA and DEP. I'll just give a brief background, in case anyone's really excited about it. Through the board of selectmen, we've been doing a lot of work at the ponds since, I believe, two thousand and eight, in various degrees, originally to control some erosion issues. And, uh, this grant is to reopen, reopen the cart path, and also to provide some water quality treatment to improve the water quality in Farm Pond. So we have along Lake Street, the CM and D has installed various rain gardens, which help treat the water quality. And this project, what you can see here is that cart path that goes down a few, it's the one closest to the boat ramp, I guess, is if you're orienting yourself. It's been closed for, I wanna say about two years. Uh, it just had really bad erosion and washout. So CM and D had to go out and just put in some trap rock, and it had to be blocked off. So through the grant funds, we were able to stabilize and reestablish the cart path. You can see, um, on that plan there, the top two pictures are the before, and the bottom two are the after. And what we came up with, uh, to preserve the rustic nature is, we did a, a GeoGrid. It kinda reinforces the turf, so it doesn't run off and it slows it down, but it's packed in with, with stone, and it's covered with a riverstone, so it doesn't hurt if you walk on it with your bare foot. But it's stronger, so it won't wash out, and all that's graded towards the side where there's a swell to treat the, uh, capture a little water, get some recharge. And then you'll see, we had four steps with permeable, um, paper stones. They have like a drainage subsystem. And then all that carries over this to the right of it. You can't see it in that picture, but there's a little catch basin and there's some recharge chambers. So, uh, that was done last fall, uh, so I believe that it's gonna be open for this, this season, this summer season. People will be able to use that again. And like I said, we've also put in a couple of rain gardens along the thing. And what we're here to talk about tonight is, as part of the grant process, um, there's a public outreach and education campaign. And, um, working with the Farm Pond Advisory Committee, the Conservation Committee, it's really been a town-wide project. A lot of people have been involved, the selectmen's office, uh, CM and D. We've come up with some informative brochures about what's going on at Farm Pond, uh, why, why the town applied for the grant, what's the purpose of it is. And it kinda shows you what's been built out there. Um, and these are gonna be available. I believe they're gonna be mailed to residents around the pond. And they're gonna be available here and at other municipal buildings. So it's been, um, I think it's been a very successful project. We are ahead of schedule, which is, as you, sure, very aware, it's always good and very rare. So, um, DEP's been very happy, uh, and we're kinda through the last steps of, of the process. We're just wrapping it up. But we wanted to bring everyone back up to date. I think it's been a year or two since we've been here, so to kinda see the fruits of the labor.
If I could, I just wanna get you to talk a little bit at sort of a higher level. Stormwater contains bacteria and other pollutants.
Yep.
And if we did nothing, and if we hadn't utilized your expertise, stormwater would have carried the bacteria and the pollutants into the pond. And with your help, we have diverted that stormwater
Yep.
to places where it can safely recharge into the ground and not allow those pollutants and that bacteria to get into the pond.
Exactly, yeah, and that's, um, why the grant is funded. It's, it's to keep the bacteria, it's to improve the water quality in the pond. So, we're keeping the, the night, the, this is a freshwater pond, so phosphorus gets in to the storm where that runs off. And if that gets into a freshwater pond in large quantities, what it does is you'll see the algae blooms, and it's just, it's not nice to look at. I mean, you guys have a beautiful, fresh pond. And it's just, it's not nice to look at, I mean, you guys have a beautiful fresh pond, that'll keep it going. Also with the bacteria that gets bound, what'll happen is a lot of times in parking lots or along these beach areas. You'll have a lot of stuff that just gets on the pavement and it doesn't get a chance to get into the groundwater through its natural things because it's an impervious area. So it'll wash in and it ends up in the pond, and that's when you have the elevated bacteria counts. And I know there have been closures in the past, it's due to a mix of reasons, not just stormwater. But stormwater is one of the factors that you can more easily control and attack. And that's how we're addressing it through the bacteria, but also through the nutrients. That's one of the biggest contributors is through stormwater, absolutely. And that's what we're, so there's, we're only showing the cart path, but as, as you know, there are various, what we call best management practices. All throughout the watershed around Farm Pond that are intercepting stormwater before it gets centralized. And it's just in, you know, in the municipal system where it's tougher to deal with because it's in a larger volume. So we're decentralizing our treatment and providing more localized water quality treatment so that you're getting cleaner water. The water's still getting through there, but it doesn't have all the sand and the bacteria and the nutrients in it as it's discharging into the ponds. So you're discharging fresh water, fresher water, I should say.
So this benefits everybody in Sherburne because it preserves Farm Pond. Is that a fair summary?
Absolutely, yes, absolutely.
And you, you've mentioned the cart path and all of that, but in prior years, one of the problems was that water was running down a paved surface. Where we have a, a boat ramp.
Yep.
And there's now an interceptor drain there that diverts the, the running water away from going right into the pond.
Exactly, and we recharge that water so that it's, you know, the sand acts as natural filter. It's almost like in your septic system where the, you know, the sand filters the water and it gets in so that, it's still getting to the pond, but it's getting to the pond in a fresher manner.
And this brochure that you've put together.
It's a collaborative effort, I, we want to make sure that everyone knows that, though. It's been very, everyone helped, it was a really good community effort.
How's it gonna be distributed again?
The butters from Farm Pond are getting in the mail.
In the mail.
We'll have some at the Town's Selectmen's Office and I believe we're gonna leave some over at the library also.
And do we have the version for the website as well?
It's on the website.
Excellent. Yeah, because this is good for all, all the butters. You have some good guidelines, there's guidelines in here that the group put together and so forth. Because you're just touching on a limited area here of Farm Pond, although it's a high traffic area, a lot of activity. A lot of bad stuff could get into the water from that activity. But it's a large pond, so there's other places that the butters hopefully pay attention to this.
Yeah, absolutely, and it's, it's, it's stuff that every resident in town can take, you know, take something out of it. You know, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna, it's something useful for everyone, because there's always gonna be water quality and issues. It all, we're, we're part of the Charles River watershed here, so I mean, it all gets there eventually. It's kind of abstract to think about it, but it's true, so everyone can play their part and this has got some good guidance for it.
Yes, well done. A series of steps here that what residents can do to preserve the quality of the water at Farm Pond. But a, a lot of this is true for any body of water.
Any freshwater service.
So for all of us who have any waters edge near our property should also take a look at this.
Yeah, any wetland areas, exactly, you know, marshy areas, absolutely. This is all stuff and it's, it's Sherburne's, like I said, we've been working in since two thousand eight in town. So Sherburne's been very upfront and aggressive at attacking this. And I think that it's, it's very important and it's something you should be commended for. Because the water quality issues, they're not going away and they're only getting worse as, you know, there's more development, there's more things going on. So if we can, like I said, decentralize and address it that way, it's cheaper in the long term, it's more effective than having an end of pipe solution. You know, rather than having to treat it as it's all concentrated in one large pipe. So this is effective, and I think Sherburne should be very proud of that because, you know, it's been five years now. That varies, you know, picking up various spots and you're treating a large amount of area. From what was just done from before, so it's really gonna have a, a long-term effect to keep Farm Pond healthy and beautiful.
Thank you for your part in that.
Absolutely, yeah, thank you, it's been a pleasure.
Our pleasure.
Is there any comment from anyone?
No, Genie, I know Genie's been active with this all along and so, and the Farm Pond Advisory Committee.
Mike Lazzes well, the Conservation Commission, yeah.
So I mean, there's so many people who've been involved, they say, you'd say it's a collaborative effort and that collaboration really makes this possible, so it's terrific.
Yeah, it's been a pleasure.
Well, thank you to you, thank you to the Conservation Commission, Farm Pond, Genie Guthrie, all of the butters.
Thank you.
All right. Elliot?
Just let everyone know that Farm Pond stickers are available at the Selectmen's Office. I got mine a couple of days ago, so.
Excellent. Do you swim in Farm Pond still, Elliot? Do you go swimming there? Do you, do you swim at Farm Pond? Do you go swimming at Farm Pond?
Not in thirty years.
Not thirty years, yeah. If you did, I would, but otherwise I'd-
I'm over sixty-five, so I get it free, so I'll take it.
I want to take a break and hit the restroom.
Okay.
Still gotta cook.
All right, great.
And we're a minute ahead of schedule. So I want to recess the meeting for a minute or so. Take a short break, we'll be back seven-
Five minutes, Paul?
Five minutes, seven oh four. Plus or minus.
Okay, we are back in session. We are to discuss the town meeting. I want to remind everybody that it's a Saturday town meeting on May fourth at ten AM at Linkwist Commons. At a prior meeting of the board, we have gone through all of the articles and taken action on many of them. And by action, I mean, we had decided to support advisories conclusions and recommendations. We had held a number of articles. We are going to pick up that discussion on those articles. We had held those articles so that we would have a full board. We still don't have a full board. And I know that our missing member feels passionately about a number of these articles. But at least we can have a preliminary discussion and see if, if we're in agreement or disagreement. And whether his participation is, is, has to be or not. So the articles, I guess, go into two different categories. The first are what I would call a government reform articles, that's Article twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, and thirty-five. And then the other category is other.
Right.
And we were gonna have a discussion of those. So to start off, let's talk about the government reform articles. Turn the floor over to you.
Okay, all right. Well, first what I'd suggest, Paul, is we just, advisories taken no action, recommended no action on all of those articles. Twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, and thirty-five. I would move to support advisories no action motion for twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, and thirty-five for the moment. So that we leave twenty-three and discuss that further and in greater depth. But as far as I'm concerned, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, I, I, I just don't see us ultimately withdraw those at town meeting. And, but still subject to what we decide on twenty-three a little bit.
I'm, I'm fine with that, I, I kind of- I kinda see our role here as my perspective, because I was on the board before you got on the board, was that this board was very hesitant about doing, tackling this government reform. We were kinda pushed that way. There's a citizen article that led to DOR study. Tom Twining became a big leader of this issue, pushed all of that. And I think we did our duty. I see ourselves like, like a quarterback, if you will. We've thrown the ball down the field. And for whatever reason, advisory did not catch the ball and run forward. And we threw down quite a few.
Right.
Quite a few balls down there. Any one of them, they could've picked up and run with. And they didn't. To get government reform done, it, there's gotta be more than just throwing the ball down the field. There has to be receivers who are gonna catch the ball and who care enough to run into the end zone. So regardless of my own views about what's the right thing for the town, I think we have to be practical. That you can tell people, as Collins has, that the way we're organized is, what's the phrase he used, unnecessary, undesirable, and, and expensive. And I think Dave Williams said that if he was put in charge, he could save us sixty-five thousand bucks. But at the end of the day, you and I can't can't do this alone.
Right.
There has to be, there has to be, you know, advisory or someone has to
Right.
pick up the ball and carry it. So on, at least on those, those four articles, I'm in agreement with you. Are there options that are available that any citizen or citizen group can put something together? And run with the ball?
Right. Right. Well, the question on twenty-three, if we go back to twenty-three, gets to be whether we wanna keep throwing the ball or trying to carry the ball. And, and I'm not prepared to carry the ball at this stage. I'm happy to see our town administrator get his sea legs in town here, if you will, for a bit. Get the lay of the land and help us bring forward government restructuring that makes sense for the town of Sherburne sometime in the future. When? Sooner than later would be my preference. But certainly by the next time we have a town meeting. And as part of that, we would then, and we, you know, maybe we'll have a different, by the time we get to it, it's, Mike will be on the board, for example. We can decide whether a task force or something like that makes sense. I don't think we need to jump into that, quite frankly, right at this moment. If, if, as some suggest, we might wanna do. You know, there are some folks that are suggesting a tax, task force that some group determines the makeup of, as opposed to the Board of Selectmen appointing it. Personally, I'd prefer to see the Board of Selectmen do the appointing of a task force dealing with ultimately this structure that falls under the Selectmen. But you follow me?
Yeah.
So, but the other part of it is, even though we're not, maybe not carrying the ball nor throwing it too much, it's still an opportunity to continue to educate people about the structural, the preference for some structural changes that seems to make sense and how we can best take advantage of that educational opportunity. It's a teaching moment, which will have a town meeting, which we have tonight, which we have every time we're dealing with these topics. How we, how we best go about that, I'm not sure, but I think we need to keep an eye on how we can seize a teaching moment and use it to, to the town's best advantage. It's not our best advantage, it's the town and the voters and the taxpayers.
Oh, right, this is all about the taxpayers.
Right.
Trying to save them some money and have a better government.
Right.
But on your specific intention there, to take no action, to support no action on Article twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, and thirty-five.
Which I made a motion, so.
To second it.
Okay.
So, all in favor? Okay.
Could, could you briefly tell these articles, I have twenty words or less.
These, these are the government, government reform articles, and there are five of them. We've acted on four of them just now. The four that we've acted on is a town administrator home rule petition that would strengthen the town administrator in a number of, in a maximum number of ways, as recommended by the Collins report. Article twenty five is to combine the treasurer and the collector position. Article twenty-six is an alternate way to combine the treasurer and the collector. And Article thirty-five was a citizen petition. So those four.
A citizen petition is what?
To use a, a weak job description for the town administrator.
Okay, thank you.
My concern about Article thirty-five is our contractors have more powers than this job description.
Right.
So it brings us into a almost, I wouldn't wanna say breach of contract, because I don't wanna encourage any, I don't wanna say anything legal, but it's, it was, it's not a wise move for the community.
Right, the other part of it was making all of those clauses part of the town's bylaws. And the job description as a bylaws doesn't need to be so precise.
What we, what's not included in the motion is Article twenty-three.
Right.
Article twenty-three is a harder case, because that's one that was the priorities of this board.
Right.
And I'm very mindful of the fact that Tom Twining's not here and not able to participate. So on that particular one article, as a courtesy to Tom, I'd like to put off taking any vote on that for the time being.
Okay.
Unless you think that setting up a, a committee that can act between now and town meeting would make any sense.
No, I, I think the clock's ticking too quickly, and what we're talking about is really trying to help convert the structure of Sherburne for the long term. So, we're, we're talking decades of Sherburne's direction. So why rush to do that in the next three weeks? I don't think we can, we, we, forgetting how we got to this point, we're at this point trying to do something of such significance in the next three weeks may not serve everybody's best interests, unless you have a burning desire. I don't, and I think, again, the prudent thing to do is to allow David to find his way about the town further and the new board evaluate the best way to go. Still, but not taking necessarily a vote on twenty-three, but it's tonight. But I, I think that's where we're headed. I, I don't, you know.
Yeah, as, as I say, I, I I don't see how we can, the two of us.
Right.
Be both quarterback and receiver and kicker and blocker.
I've seen how you move, and you could probably do it, but.
Well, I would say I'm quite shaken by what's happened to Tom.
Yes, yes.
The, the fact that three months ago, he was, you know, larger than life and
He was larger than life.
speaking and arguing and feeling passionate about different things, and now unable to breathe.
Yeah, he's in the fight for his life.
Fight for his life. It just, it just shakes me up, so. You know, we're not at full strength.
No.
And the guy who has been the, the, really the leader on this issue is I keep thinking that, you know, but for the grace of God, it could be any one of us.
That's correct.
Not just on this board, but anyone in the community can be stricken like that. So I, I, I think we have to take due regard for the resources that we have.
Right.
And the, the passion that he had for this issue. But I, I don't want him to be disappointed in us either. So that's why I'm saying let's
Well, let's be hopeful, because our next meeting, we may have him on the squat box there. We, we weren't even certain until this evening at seven o'clock that, that he wasn't gonna participate, so. And, and I know that if he can, he will. As you say, he's very passionate. Loved what he was doing for the town.
And like us, it's all, it's all about making a better government, one that saves money for the town, operates more efficiently. And he had the advantage of being an outsider that came in and saw things, worked with Collins, brought in Collins. Had this vision, making the town better. Geez, it's, I'm really shaken, truly shaken. Let's turn to a discussion of the other articles.
Okay. What did I wanna do? I wanted to hold, I, I mean, we had what, Article nine is a held item? And for me, what I had mentioned was I'm looking forward to some more information to satisfy me that there, there were no better alternatives or less expensive alternatives. And I don't think we'll know that until we get to town meeting. So if you were to ask me to vote to support advisory's favorable action, I would take a pass on that.
Well, it takes two to tango.
Okay.
On a three-person board, so.
Yes. So that's where that is. And then we held the changes to the, it's the, basically the use of a DESA permit funds to pay for improvements on, on Western Avenue. One, half or a portion of the improvements would deal with the intersection of Whitney Farms and Western, Whitney Street and Western Avenue. And I guess I'm looking at the wrong one here. But that, that one, I had half recused myself, I guess, is where I'm at. But I look at that, I mean, I, it, it makes sense to me. The town has voted, has done a variety of town meeting votes to use the permit money to do the studies, the traffic calming studies, and then to do the traffic, the, the street change engineering. And now this is to implement the engineering. And, and so it's a sort of the third phase of, two phases that the town's already moved forward on. So to me, it makes a lot of good sense, but because I live on Whitney Street and Whitney, the end of Whitney Street is gonna be, have some work under it, under this article. I don't want, I don't want anybody to cry foul.
I, I, I'm in support of this article and in support of the recommendations of advisory to proceed. What if we divide the question, Brook Street, you're not, you're not.
That's correct, that's correct.
I'm about it too, so. Maybe half approve it.
Fine, that, that sounds good. That sounds good.
So I move that we half approve this article with regard to the intersection furthest from you.
I second that, yes.
Oh, if I, oh, there's.
I believe this is a DESA money, not town money that we're spending, is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
So we shouldn't lose too much sleep over the, the expense on this, it's a DESA money. So, I just hope they get it right.
Nancy Hess.
Since Peter has already made his disclosure, can't you implement the rule of necessity and then jump it over on Peter?
Um, no, because that's a complicated legal thing. But Tom still is available. He may not be available for this meeting, but he's still available. So can't use the rule of necessity. But if, if you feel comfortable with the disclosures, it'd be all right. That's up to you. But on the half, it'd be half. That's about.
Well, all we're doing is supporting advisory's verdict, if you will, right?
So, all in favor of that piece?
Right.
And I don't wanna push you at all on the other piece. If you want to do something on it, that's up to you.
Well, personally, I can say I will be voting in favor.
Well, so am I.
So, so for whatever that's worth, how's that?
You might, you might call Barbara.
Okay, that's what I'll do. So for a next meeting, we might have the half that's held. That's what I'll do. And I'll talk to her about this easement as well, which was Article
Twelve.
Twelve. Which is the easement from the Whitney Farms, which is right across the street from me, to get to the Upper Charles Trail, and it's just acceptance of an easement. And so I'll, I'll check with Barbara on that as well. Okay, good, good advice, Paul. The last one I held, and actually, in thinking about it, it was the one of the last ones, it was the advisory deciding to take no action on transferring any free cash to the OPEB stabilization fund. And I actually believe that they're, they're missing a year of the cycle by taking that action. And so I would vote not in support of their take no action.
What would you like to do?
I would like to see them transfer a hundred thousand dollars into the OPEB stabilization fund out of free cash. They've appropriated a hundred thousand, but that's in the two thousand fourteen budget.
That's gonna be out of general.
Next year.
Two thousand fourteen.
Yes.
General revenues of the town.
That's correct, so.
What would that do to free cash?
It's another hundred thousand, but I, they have quite a supply, sorry. I mean, we have adequate supply, and there's no free cash being used to purchase any of the capital items. So the, the demands on free cash this year are limited. The demand for closing the budget deficit is under a hundred thousand dollars. The demand for supplementals has been reduced because there's the one-time free up of overlay for the phone line issue that's been resolved, a significant amount that came in. So they really have a healthier free cash position available. And so I think moving a hundred thousand into this OPEB stabilization, consistent with prior years, makes good, and consistent with next year in effect, makes good sense to me. And I don't, what I think is that they didn't quite realize that they were skipping a year when they took their vote on this on the public hearing.
I'm in support of the idea of putting aside more funds.
Yep.
So if, if you want to fight that fight.
I will.
Then I'll move to support your, your proposal to seek an additional hundred thousand dollar transfer from free cash to stabilization.
Great.
So moved.
I second.
Any comment? All in favor?
Terrific.
Okay, you got it.
So, they'll put the holes.
I, just philosophically, leaving money in free cash, to me, isn't as good as actually putting it in the bank.
Right.
I like to see money in the bank. It's that way, when you're dealing with bond agencies and outsiders looking at the town, they can see, well, you've got this money in the bank.
Right.
But it's in free cash, it's sort of an amorphous number that you have to actually make a presentation with.
Right.
There's no reason to leave it in free cash.
Well, that plus, this really is less than half, about half of what the real cost, if we were funding, using the free If we were funding using the free ca, using the O P E B fund that we have set aside, uh, that the town has authorized, but hasn't put any money in yet. If the town was funding that in accordance with the O P E B, the actuaries' funding schedule, the amount would be nearly double the hundred thousand. So we're, and that's just for the town only. It doesn't deal with our portion of the issue at the region, which isn't being dealt with at all, frankly. So to me, this is, uh, is, uh, we'll be less likely to stiff our employees in the future of their health benefits that we've given them and they've earned.
Well, we're working on the state level to substantially reduce that O P E B number to begin with. So all the fear that's out there that we have, what is it, eight million or something like?
Yeah, we're at eleven or twelve million. I think you said it might be eight million if the, whatever these changes are at the state. Now, what I, what I don't know about it is what the state's doing if they're reducing the benefits. Because the eleven million or whatever the number is today represents benefits that have been earned and are owed. So it really is, they'll be, it would only be less if we reduce what they get for benefits in the future that they've earned to date. So it's complicated stuff, but it's complicated bookkeeping, I guess is the best way to put it. But I applaud the efforts that the state's taken to mitigate this.
Just to go back a minute for the, uh, issue of the middle school. Is there anything that the town administrator could be tasked with doing or Diane be tasked with doing? To get you stuff to, uh, allow us to take?
Take some action.
Position one way or the other on that?
Uh, I'll ask David when he comes back, see what he can, I'll think about what, you know, really is what worth more understand, a better understanding of the options that were explored and ruled out to get to the point that this solution is the best solution and the most cost-effective solution. That, that's the part that I'm missing. And I don't know what, what there may be on that. So I'll check with David, see what he can dig out.
That brings us to other business. Unless, have anything more?
Nope. That's great, Paul.
And under other business, the town administrator has asked for authority to set the mileage reimbursement rate. And he, there was a memo from him.
Looks like that. Yep. So he's got a motion right in the middle there, suggested.
If you're in agreement, why don't you make the motion?
Okay. Uh, I, I am. I move to authorize the town administrator to set the mileage reimbursement rate and review the rate at least twice a year for fairness, given rates established by the federal government, state government, and other municipalities in Massachusetts. In addition, I would like the administrator to implement a standardized personal travel and mileage reimbursement requ- request process that sets standards for how and what should be submitted before a request can appear on a warrant for payment.
Second. This is to keep us current, keep the numbers accurate. It, uh, just trying to see what I can read from this, uh, memo. Says, I would like to have the responsibility, the current rate is zero point five 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 per mile. I would like to change it to point five oh per mile. Not only is that consistent with some area towns, it is a time savings in calculating mileage and reviewing mileage requests for accuracy. It is very difficult to make a mistake and very easy to recognize an error in a mileage reimbursement when it is fifty cents per mile. Basically take the number of miles, cut it in half, and add the decimal. So.
But we're not actually moving on the rate. We're just moving on, giving, granting him the authority to be the one setting the rate and, uh,
Right. And he says.
He specified what rate he would like to set it at, but.
If this happens, I guess July first, based on the federal rate for the previous January.
Yeah.
Just picking out little things so people know what we're doing. Basically what we're saying to him is you do the calculations and you set the rate.
Right.
I wonder if the price of gasoline should be, uh, figured into your reimbursement? Because it fluctuates so much. I mean, in the past few years, we've seen gasoline go from two dollars a gallon to over four. And, uh, I don't know with the, with this mileage, if, uh, the current price of gasoline at the time that the mileage was, made, should be figured in.
It, it, it is figured in. That's why once a year we set the mileage rate. And the mileage rate is based on the calculated costs that come out of, uh, the Internal Revenue Service, I believe.
But it can fluctuate quite a bit just in in the past, past couple of weeks, it's gone.
But we can't operate a government.
Twenty-five cents or so.
We can't operate a government changing the rate every day.
Yep.
So what the I R S has set up is they set it up annually.
It, it just isn't practical is what you're saying.
Right. So we have, we have annual, but the issue for us is not what the rate is. The issue before us is who will set the rate? And he's asked that the town administrator be given that authority. And that's done in communities fairly commonly, to have the town administrator do that, using whatever resources he ha, he wants to use. But I think the I R S is the, the key one, but there may be other, other resources.
Good luck.
Nancy Hess.
We have been using through the years, the, the federal government number that comes out once a year and that carries for the year. And we've referred to using the government number. Are you saying that he will use the government number or he can adjust the government number? And are you saying it will be changed mid-year or you interpret the, what you just voted on? Is, is the number going to change in the middle of the fiscal year?
No, it, what he says is, what he wrote here was that every year on July one, the number is set.
Okay. And you said something about basing on the government number, which is what we do now.
Yes, but the government number, I guess, is the number as of January one, even though they're setting it as of July one. I don't, I don't know if that's good or bad. I'm, I'm, I'm not the accountant type. I'm more the, the lawyer type. I defer to Peter.
Well, but, but, but the motion, but the motion isn't saying, the motion says he will review it twice a year for fairness and blah, blah, blah. Given, uh, rates established in the federal government, what's done at the state, other municipalities. So it isn't saying that he will use the federal I R S deduction mileage rate that's allowed. Doesn't say that, but he will use that as a guideline in establishing the rate that he.
But he will do that once a year?
Twice a year. He will, he will review it twice a year. Doesn't mean he's going to change it twice a year.
But is the latitude in there to change it, or is it established for the fiscal year?
It just says he's going to review the rate at least twice, twice a year. At least twice a year.
But what if your vote authorizes?
A, we haven't voted yet, but B, I'll read you the motion again.
Okay.
Here, and he, he wrote this motion. I didn't. So before you shoot the messenger, I'll read you what he wrote.
I'm just trying to clarify what, what authority you're.
He, he's not here to clarify, but I'll read it to you. The, the motion was, he's requesting that the Board of Selectmen vote the following. I move to authorize the town administrator to set the mileage reimbursement rate and review the rate at least twice a year for fairness, given rates established by the federal government, state government, and other municipalities in Massachusetts. In addition, I would like the town administrator to implement a standardized personal travel and mileage reimbursement request process that sets standards for how and what should be submitted before requests can appear on a warrant for payment.
Okay. My question to you is how do you interpret that? Is that, do you interpret that, that when he reviews this, he can change it in the fiscal year? Or is he setting it in July for the fiscal year? How are you interpreting, you're about to vote on this. How are you interpreting what your voting on?
He can, he reviews it twice a year and he can change it. He, he, he can review it at least twice a year. He can change it sixteen times a year under this. Whatever he, he thinks is fair and equitable and appropriate. So more on the lines of what Elliot was talking about even, quite frankly. Doesn't say once peg it for a fiscal year. It's not saying that. He could peg it for the next five years if he chooses to. Have to justify it, but.
So Paul.
I'm sure if he put the decimal in the wrong place, that you'll come to a selectmen's meeting and ask it to be fixed.
I just, I, I'm just want to be clear because the policy has been, you didn't have to think about it. You knew it was July first, what that was going to be. So if it changes, then there has to be some good communication so that people don't pay.
That's right. But that's management as opposed to policy. I, uh, we've been advised by Collins and D O R to empower the town administrator and not to micromanage him. And if he's going to set the rate at point five oh as opposed to point five five or point four five, it may be in the old days that the selectman would be breathing down the town administrator's neck arguing about pennies. But we're trying to move this stuff to the town administrator. We're trying to make a modern town administrator. And what this, this does, this doesn't set the rate. This identifies who's responsible for setting the rate. And asks that he, he look at it at least twice a year for fairness. And to implement a standardized reimbursement request process that sets standards.
I don't have a problem with that. I just wanted to understand what, what was going to happen here. What we have done is we've taken the federal link and that's been established, I think by a vote of the selectmen years ago, that, that rate would be used and it would be stable for a year. I just wanted to be sure that we were all interpreting the motion the same way. That it will not be established on July first. It would be established.
You mean choose to do it that way?
You can let him do it. If he finds you disagree, then you can just.
That's right. We're going to give him rope.
Don't you think we should back rock a little bit? Or it's his decision, but you can, uh, you can be hitting him over there if you don't like it.
Yeah. Comfort, he'll do the right thing.
Changes hard.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
It's not just that. It's the budgeting issue too, the budget.
That's right. That's right. Any, any more comments? Suggestions? All right. All in favor of the motion? If it doesn't work, we can always revisit it.
That's right. We have targets on our backs, you know.
Well, I think your managers wanted to be sure that at the end of the year, if they owe somebody mileage, that they're not going to have to pay them more than the budget.
I don't think that'll happen. Okay. Future agenda items. What, can you give us a preview of what's people been asking to come before us with?
Um, we asked, the pool was coming, uh, forward next week for various brokerages that are coming from town. Contamination is coming, the call is meant to be.
For what?
We got a special municipal status law with the, um, management.
Do we have any other, uh, town meeting prep things we as a board should be thinking about, Paul, and putting that on the agenda, I wonder?
Yeah.
And there's also a, a meeting we're posted for or will be posted for? A planning session or something?
You have posted.
And then what was it? Remind me when that is again?
The twenty-third of April.
And it's, uh, noon time or something like that?
I'll double check.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't.
Also, um, the town meeting, I'll post to an hour before the actual town meeting starts.
Yes.
An idea.
Yes. Then we can take final positions.
And are we going to have an executive session next week?
We're slated to have one this week. Um, in anticipation of, uh, David.
Union negotiations and so. So we have a meeting on Thursday?
A regular, a regular meeting on Thursday. And we have an executive session for that Thursday?
Right now, it's.
Good. Okay.
And so we'll have remote participation probably on next, next week's meeting as well, right?
Be offset right now.
Yep.
Just looking at the calendar to make sure.
You must have a little busy time of year for you, Paul?
I got two or three town meetings a, a week.
Yeah.
Yes, Thursday I have Sherburne Board of Select. And we also have a meeting May second, right?
Which is the Thursday before town meeting?
Yes.
Yes. Which would be a big warrant and that sort of thing, if nothing else.
Yeah, it gives us a chance to see what's. What advisories report?
Yes.
Actually says, I have, I have not seen the final printed version.
No. Great.
Oh, what did you say? Yes, it's the twenty-third of April at twelve fifteen, we're dying to be prepping the town meeting.
Yeah. And, and these are now online and hard copies available.
Hard copies are in the office. People have been coming in to get some.
I picked mine up the other day.
Great. They, they actually gave you one?
We did.
They actually gave you one?
They gave you twenty dollars.
Good for you. All right. Any topics not anticipated by the chair or forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting? Nope. So I think we're at the end.
I think we are, Paul. So I would move to adjourn.
I second. All in favor?
Done again, sir?